I declare open Legislative Council Legal and Social Issue Committee, Public Hearing Board Inquiry into the State. That's the wrong one. Into. Into the Workplace Drug Testing Victoria. Before we continue, please ensure your mobile phones are switched off, silenced, and background noise are minimised, please. I would like to acknowledge, inspect the Aboriginal people and traditional custodians of the land we gather today, and pay respect to the elders, past, present and emerging. Also in particular welcome any elders, committee members who are here today in part of their knowledge of the issue to the committee. Welcome to member to public watching via live broadcast. Before we continue, I'd like to introduce the committee. My name is Chum Loham, Chair, but Deputy Chair, Mr Ryan Bachelor to my right, to my left, Dr Sarah Mansfield, Mr Richard Welch, and Mr Dave Egansey, and Miss Rachel Payne.
Hello.
Also joining us on Zoom is Mr Lee Tommas and Dr Rene Heath. Welcome us to the panel. Joining us today is, you've got WorkSafe, Mr Ben Wright and Mr Joe Calafoury. Welcome. Before we continue, I just want to read this information to you. All evidence taken is protected by Parliament privilege as provided by the Council Act 975 and third subject to the vision of Legislative Council Standing Orders. The informed information you provide during this hearing is protected by law. You're protected against any actions for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same thing, those comments may be not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered contempt of Parliament. All evidence has been recorded. You'll be provided approved version of the transcript following the hearing. The transcript will be openly made public and posted on the committee website. For hand side record, could you please state your full name and organisation you're appearing on behalf of, please?
Yes, Joe Calafoury, CEO of WorkSafe.
Benjamin Wright, the manager of Earth Resources in Silica.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for making time to be here. I invite you to have a quick opening statement before we open the committee to ask questions.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and good morning, committee members. I have a very brief statement that I'll just whip through before we're more than happy to answer any questions. So the committee, I understand, has been provided a background document on WorkSafe's regulatory remit in relation to workplace drug testing ahead of my appearance, which I hope has been of assistance. And in that document at the hearing today, I intend to briefly address the terms of reference as applicable to WorkSafe. WorkSafe is Victoria's workplace health and safety regulator and workplace injury insurer. Our role is to reduce workplace harm and improve outcomes for injured workers. We do this by providing education, support and guiding Victorian workplaces to provide a safe environment for their workers. WorkSafe administers several acts and regulations as part of our role, including the Occupational Health and Safety Act 2004, the Workplace Injury and Rehabilitation Compensation Act 2013 and their associated regulations. There is no express requirement, mandate or prohibition around workplace drug and alcohol policies or testing in the OHNS laws for most workplaces, except for mining. And Chair, as you introduced, we've got Ben Wright, he's our Senior Manager of Earth Resources team in Silica. He is an expert on anything matters mining for the hearing today. But the use of drugs and alcohol in the workplace may become an occupational health and safety issue if a worker's ability to exercise judgement, coordination, motor control, concentration and alertness at work is impaired. So we take the approach that occupational health and safety issues in this context arise from the effects of the drug on the worker, not its legal status. So whether that's medicinal cannabis or any prescription drug, any illegal drug, we treat it all the same way. If the use of the drug affects a worker's ability to perform their role safely, it is an occupational health and safety issue. And once again, I reiterate, it's about the effect on a worker, not the drug itself. As with other OHNS issues, employers should take a risk management approach when addressing the hazards and risks associated with the use of alcohol and other drugs in the workplace. Alcohol and other drug policies are one way for employers to address these risks. And WorkSafe guidance emphasises that the focus of the policy should be to eliminate or reduce risks associated with the use of alcohol or other drugs in the workplace in a way that is consistent and fair for all employees. On our website, you'll find guidance around establishing a workplace drug and alcohol policy, which always should be done in consultation with workers. It's important to note employers must consider all other relevant legislative and regulatory obligations when complying with their OHNS duties, which include industry-specific safety, industrial relations, privacy, equal opportunity and anti-discrimination laws. And just in closing, Chair, equal opportunity and discrimination matters in Victoria are obviously regulated by the Victorian Equal Opportunity and Human Rights Commission under the Equal Opportunity Act. OHNS laws only deal with discrimination on a limited basis, where the OHNS Act prohibits an employer from discriminating against employees based on health and safety matters. The Work Act prohibits discrimination based on a worker notifying an employer of a workplace injury, seeking compensation for a workplace injury or lodging a work cover claim. So in closing, we take the approach that regardless of any drug, it is the impact it has on the worker's ability to perform their role that's really at the heart of that matter. That's really where WorkSafe's remit is. We thank you for your time and we're happy to take any questions today and anything that we can't answer on our feet today, we're obviously happy to take on notice and provide to the committee.
Thank you. Ben, you're not making any comments?
I'll comment for myself.
Well, thank you. But it's about, well, quite a few of us, we'll limit it to about four minutes each. I'll start off with a quick question before I consider the committee. Lesson to occupational health safety, if an incident occurred on a workplace where there's no framework lesson to drug and alcohol imposed on the workers, liabilities, who, if it didn't occur, who's responsible if an incident has occurred, to the employer or the employee?
Yes, that's a very good question, Chair. And I suppose to any type of scenario question, our answer will always be sort of, it depends on the specifics of a matter. At a first principle, employers have the obligation under the OHNS Act to maintain a safe workplace as reasonably as practical as possible. So that's where you, that's where you start. On an issue by issue basis, it would depend on the circumstances, but under, under the Act, it is the employers that actually is the duty holder that have the obligation to ensure that a workplace is safe.
So I understand that you also, in the workplace, WorkSafe, that all drugs, including prescription and illegal drugs, should be treated the same way under the alcohol and drug policies, correct? Include medicinal cannabis as well?
Yeah, that's right. So the hazards and risks associated with the use of alcohol and other drugs should be assessed in precisely the same way. So WorkSafe's issue is really not with the legality of any drugs. It's really about identifying the hazards associated, assessing the risks, determining what your control measures are, and then conducting the review. So in one respect, this issue is considered exactly the way you would consider any other normal OHNS issue.
So just one more question before I pass on to the committee. From a WorkSafe point of view, do you think we should have a framework for each employee across the spectrum? There should be a framework, there should be standards across the workplace, that there should be a framework lesson to drug and alcohol policies that should be enforced?
Yeah, I suppose we don't really have a specific position on whether there should be a framework or not. My suspicion is that would be a policy matter for government, for government rather. And I suppose it does depend a little bit on an issue by issue basis. Perhaps maybe if I invite Ben to comment briefly on the mining industry, we have a bit more of a specific regulation that applies to this topic, I think?
Yeah, thank you. So there are specific regulations in the mining sector that do require employees to have a system in place to manage both the risks to employees due to drugs or alcohol, as well as actively look for its presence and to prevent people who may be impaired by drugs or alcohol from entering or remaining at the workplace. That is the legislative structure that supports these matters within the mining sector. What falls from that is companies developing individualised policies and procedures with their staff and with their, with their management teams to articulate how that will occur and to ensure natural justice processes. And of course, the appropriate levers to allow any prescription medication to be disclosed and used in line with authorisation from the treating practitioner.
Yep, thank you. Just want to get ahead of space. I understand mining, transport and police have their own, because of the nature of work. I'm just saying, overall, other occupation which not require manual or motorised coordination, would it help OHNS investigators if it's a framework standardised across the board?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about that question. It doesn't jump out. So at the moment, there's a pretty clear, there's a pretty clear duty in terms of maintaining a safe workplace and safety. Obviously, it covers physical and mental safety. So yeah, probably a policy matter for government, but it wouldn't, wouldn't jump out in terms of our obligations are clear under, from our perspective.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Chair, if you'd like to continue.
You've got a set of guidance policies, really, to, I assume the function of those guidance policies is to assist employers, understand their duty and how to exercise their obligations consistent with that duty. Do those policies, how far do they go in terms of detailing what employers should and shouldn't be doing?
Yeah, so I suppose they're very much not at the minute prescriptive levels. So one of the feedback we often get from, whether it's employees, employers or stakeholder groups, is try and possible to make our material digestible and practical and usable. So they tend to be more at the, at the higher level and it tends to be more about understanding the principles and everyone's roles and statutory responsibilities. So on this topic, it's that, it's a, it's a normal OHNS safety approach in terms of you have your duty to make sure your workers are safe and you have your duty, including to protect the health and safety so far as reasonably practicable. And that obviously what that looks like, industry by industry, depends. So I wouldn't say it's completely prescriptive.
And getting to that, what's reasonably practical at an industry level? Do, who helps employers understand what that looks like? Is that WorkSafe's responsibility or is it industry associations? Who, who comes to the real heart of what's reasonably practical at an industry level?
All of the above, actually. So we have statutory obligations to assist. So in terms of part of the role of being the regulator, is you sort of have your compliance and enforcement and prosecution end of the spectrum. But similarly, we get tens of thousands of calls every year in an advisory capacity. So part of that is the role of the regulator. Part of that is the role of industry associations, such as the VECs and the RIGs, and then obviously the sector-specific associations, such as, say, Transport or ones that exist in mining. So it's, it's definitely both, in addition to the normal avenues of legal advice that people would be able to procure.
You mentioned in your opening statement about, obviously you've got your duties under the Occupational Health and Safety Act to provide a safe workplace. There's obviously discrimination laws about not discriminating against people on the basis of medical condition. Do those two conflict? And if so, how and how do they get resolved?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe it as they, they conflict. I would say in any workplace, there's an intersection of different, of different parts of legislation. So when complying with your OHNS duties, employers must consider all relevant legislative and regulatory obligations that are considered, whether that's industrial relations, equal opportunity, privacy, et cetera, et cetera. So I would say you've got more of an intersection with other parts of law as opposed to any inherent conflict per se.
So do you see those issues playing out in any way that's problematic at the moment? Or do you think there's an understanding amongst employers about how to navigate those circumstances?
Yeah, it was something Ben and I, actually, interesting, we're just discussing in the way it was, so we certainly do not experience a large volume of inquiries on this specific topic. I don't have a specific number of hand at the moment. So, you know, so from a WorkSafe perspective, in terms of the issues that get raised with us in terms of for clarity, this isn't one at the moment where we've received large representations. That's not to say that it's not an issue at particular workplaces, in particular sectors. But no, it's not something that we've received a large volume of inquiries about.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. David, would you like to continue?
Thank you, Chair. Nice to see you again. Could I ask, first of all, do you, do you consider alcohol and drugs in the workplace and worker impairment to be a major contributor to workplace injuries?
On the data that I have seen, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't describe it as a major contributor. If I think of my previous life at the TAC, certainly in road trauma, you'd definitely have drug and alcohol in terms of road trauma. But in terms of workplace injury data that I have seen, no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be jumping out in terms of the top, the top drivers of workplace injuries.
So the data is actually there and you've, you're able to make that assessment? Or it's not really that clear?
At a high aggregate, at a higher aggregate level. So if I speak really briefly, so WorkSafe's got, we've got about 100,000 active clients and at a really high aggregate level in terms of a slip, trip and a fall, psycho circle injury, musculoskeletal. So we've sort of got what I call high level aggregate data. But the only thing that I always stress is with any injury, there's often a combination of factors and causes and the like. But in terms of does alcohol and drugs leap out in terms of the top three or four of the data sets that I have seen, no, it doesn't.
Okay. As you identify in your very succinct submission, you say, you basically indicate that the, the Act is largely silent on the responsibilities of employers, unions and health and safety reps to negotiate workplace drug testing policies. Do you have any sense of how many, how many workplaces or what percentage of workplaces actually have agreements in place?
I actually don't, I confess. I'm not sure. I'm happy to sort of investigate. I suspect in the mining industry would be quite common, but mining aside, no, I actually wouldn't have any knowledge on that.
Can I give that to you as a question? Because we'd be very keen to understand.
Of course, we'll endeavour, we'll make inquiries, see what we can do.
I think picking up on a theme that our chairperson raised, is, is it a shortcoming in the legislation that there is actually no imperative given to having workplace drug policies in place?
From, from WorkSafe's perspective, we certainly, as I touched on earlier, we don't experience it as an impediment on a day-to-day basis. So in terms of our, the statute's very clear about having your, having your obligations as an employer as a duty holder. So yeah, I'm happy to defer the policy matter to government, but from a WorkSafe perspective, I haven't had any feedback from our inspectors or our, our legal team that it's, it's an impediment in our day-to-day duties in terms of enforcing the OHNS or the Work Act.
Okay. The Guide for Developing a Workplace Alcohol and Other Drugs Policy, which seems to be about the only, there's, I think there's a couple of tip sheets, as you call them. Otherwise, that's about it on the site, as far as I can tell, was published in 2017. And as far as I can tell, also hasn't been amended since then. And that was, of course, the same time that medicinal cannabis was introduced or legalised in Victoria. So I'm curious as to whether or not the exponential growth in medicinal cannabis is, is on WorkSafe's radar and whether or not the guide actually is, is fit for purpose, particularly in terms of the issue of presence versus impairment of THC?
So to your question, so certainly, it is on, it is on our radar in a number of ways, separate to this, obviously, inquiry as part of the environmental scanning work that we do. I can share with the committee, having, having read the guidance material as part of the preparation for this committee, given where we are now, 2024, I think that is worthy of revision. It's worthy us to have a fresh look at that guidance material and I'm happy to undertake that as an, as an action item too.
Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Doctor Mansfield?
Thank you, and thank you both for appearing today. I'm interested in understanding, are you aware of, you know, roughly sort of what proportion of, you know, businesses implement workplace drug testing in Victoria?
I confess, I do not.
Okay. And maybe specifically looking at mining, how widespread is the use of workplace drug testing in mining?
Thanks for the question, Doctor. It is, I would say, in every mining company in Victoria.
Yep. And what's the evidence base that you rely on for using workplace drug testing in that sector?
Evidence base in that, being a high hazard sector, there is, you would say, lots of opportunity for individuals to, to manage hazards directly. And just, just on the basis of the, the nature of the work lends to the position within the legislation being more formalised for this particular sector in that you have, there is a potential for multiple fatality events within the mining sector where workers directly contribute to controls and manage and maintain those controls on a daily basis. And that, that simply elevates the, the importance of thoroughness and, yeah, the, yeah, the importance of everybody contributing to that safe workplace.
And so, given that, I think you've acknowledged in the submission that testing doesn't actually correlate with impairment, what other measures do you put in place to assess impairment?
I would say that that is a, a real challenge being faced by the sector at the moment, where alcohol testing is fairly well correlated with impairment. That, that same level of confidence isn't found for other drug presence.
And where there have been incidents in the mining industry, in the analysis of what's led to those incidents, have, has alcohol or other drugs played a role in any of those incidents when you sort of look at it post-fact?
I can absolutely say that in the history of the mining sector, there will be incidents where alcohol and other drugs may have contributed. It is very standard practice to conduct alcohol and drug screening in a post-incident investigation. So most company policies include post-incident immediate testing of people involved within, within any incident.
And with the, the type of testing that is used in the mining industry, are you able to provide any details about what that is?
At a high level?
Yeah.
Almost every site would have the breathalyzer at the front gate and most people would be tested most days for the presence of alcohol. In terms of drug testing, they have proprietary cheek swabs as well as urine analysis available at the entry points for drug detection.
And so for someone who's using medicinal cannabis, where there may be THC detectable, you know, if you've got a cheek swab every day, how is that compatible with being able to work in the mining industry, given the high risk of THC being detected on a cheek swab in that situation? If they're, say, having to have multiple doses of that a day?
From a, from a legislative point of view, and we certainly allow a, a prescribed medication to be used at a mine when it is authorised by the treating practitioner. And that implies a good communication between the, the person using that drug, their treating practitioner and the, and the company involved. So there's nothing that states you can't have any, any prescribed drug in your system. It would then come down to a case-by-case basis on how that is managed. I feel that the issue would arise if it was undeclared and, and discovered in a drug screening.
Thank you, Doctor Mansfield. Mr Welch?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. Just to pick a little bit up on the Chair's questions regarding the requirement to actively, in some cases actively look for the presence of impairment, I guess. And then when, if you assess that, you assess it on a case-by-case basis. So I was just curious, what's the role of precedent then within your assessments of it? If it's a case-by-case basis, do you have sort of a precedence case law type approach?
Probably not in the sense of the case law in these types of schemes tends to be more, I'm just trying to think it through, perhaps on the compensation side of the business. I'm just trying to think in this, in this context. No, I mean, our inspectors obviously have guidance material and industry knowledge in terms of it can be a bit sector-specific, but I'm just trying to think of outside, say, the mining sector.
And maybe, yeah, I could clarify, but if, if, if you're considering whether they've been sufficiently active in doing it, is there, is there a, what's the role of precedent in where that line is per industry, I guess, and also per scale of organisation as well?
It's a good question. I think you've got over 350,000 employers in Victoria from one person employers to very large, large corporations. So it's really when we sort of look down our published approach, identify, assess, control, review. So it, look, it does depend on the context. It does depend on the nature of your risks and it does depend on what levers an employer has to mitigate risks. The smaller the size of a business, by definition, the, the less opportunity to redirect into different roles or offer forklift into an administrative, for example. So we have our, we have our Act, our regulations and our guidance material. So probably less of the legal precedent, if I put it that way, but more of a, an approach that we work with stakeholders as to what modern safety should look like.
Because if, if an instance was contested, I guess, by the employer, do they refer, yeah, well, do they have access to information to say, well, in this case it was treated like this and we feel we've been treated like that, et cetera? That's, and do you see in your mind at any point there would need to be sort of some sort of rationalisation or, you know, documentation of, okay, this is precedent, so these, these would be more than just precedents, these become guidelines themselves?
Something probably worthy, worthy of consideration, certainly because every decision we make as WorkSafe is, in this context, an administrative decision. So our decisions are contestable and employers can seek review via different mechanisms of our, for example, our inspector. Decisions can be subject to an internal review process or via the court process. And to your second point, I think it probably goes to us having a bit of a think about reviewing that guidance material. I mean, really, as a regulator, we want workplaces to be safe as possible and we want to be as helpful as possible. So if there is a view from a committee or experts or stakeholders that they would require more clarity from WorkSafe, then that's something we're always quite open-minded to, to work into as to what that would look like.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that's all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Miss Payne?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for appearing today. I'm going to jump around a little bit, just going off what a few people have talked about. But I'm particularly interested, because mining is, it's compulsory for workers to be tested. That's correct?
Not explicitly.
Not explicitly.
It is, it is mandatory for the businesses to have a system in place.
It's mandatory for, to have a system in place. Okay, so that system, it would look like, you've mentioned breathalyzers to test for alcohol and then a swab that would test for, for drugs. Is there any other sort of impairment testing that is happening? Because you make reference here to exercising judgement, coordination, motor skill, concentration and alertness at work. If I am hungover and I test, look, clear with my alcohol reading, yet my ability to be alert, to have motor skills, coordination may be impaired, is there other options for testing and is that an option for the employer to request?
My experience is that the, beyond those types of tests we've, we've discussed, the judgment would be made more anecdotally through potentially conversations. And this, this gets back to the safety legislation, looking at this as a hazard. Equally, you could be fatigued, equally you could be grieving.
Totally, yeah.
So those things could all impair your, your mental state at work and, and that would be the role of a supervisor to, to understand that person's normal performance. And, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of the American roadside sort of drug, alcohol testing of walking a line, you know, saying the alphabet backwards. We don't, we don't see that.
Okay. And, and so as a regulator, you wouldn't have sort of guidance for further testing options? You know, there's, there's sort of applications and things now that you can, you can use on your phone that would test sort of your hand-eye coordination, cognitive ability?
I haven't seen that in industry.
Okay, great. And just on treating prescription and illegal drugs, you know, when it comes to based on the effects on the the effects on the worker, not the status of the drug, one of the terms of reference in this inquiry relates to looking at the anti-discrimination laws and, and for medicine and, and medical treatment to be a, a captured attribute in that space. Is that something where the regulator would have comment on that? Or is that something where you, you may see that you may need to provide guidance on those changes if that was something that was to be enacted?
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a specific comment. The O H N S Act 2004 deals with discrimination on a, on a very limited basis, consistent with our regulatory remits. So under that act, it prohibits an employer from engaging in certain adverse conduct against workers on the basis of health and safety matters. And we, and we do work closely with other, with other regulators in this space. I'll probably, I wouldn't have a specific comment about the act.
Okay. All right. And just on discrimination or complaints handling, do you receive any complaints from employees that they feel their employer's policy could be considered discrimination? Is that something that a regulator would, you would assist with?
So we cer-, we certainly receive complaints from, from workers on, and if it's a complaint that's relevant to the O H N S Act, we'll triage in terms of response. So if it's, if it's connected to the O H N S Act or the, or the Work Act, that is something that's part of our statutory remit to look into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Lee, are you having a question?
I don't have any questions at this stage, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Heath, are you still on Zoom?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. I've just got a few questions. So the first one was, you were talking about how it's not, like Ms. Payne said, it's not the drug itself, it's the effect of it. So is the responsibility for that assessment therefore on the doctor, not so the workplace?
I suppose you've always, an employer on, on any day-to-day basis has, has the legal obligation to ensure your workplace is as safe and that you are controlling your risks as far as practicable, would be the response here.
Right. You said though, the prescribing doctor, you mentioned about how, you've mentioned something about that, I can't remember your words entirely. So if you've got somebody, for instance, that was on sleeping tablets. That wouldn't be too much different, I wouldn't imagine, in terms of impairment. Like, that would also be quite unsafe cooperate machinery. In fact, it says it on the, the packet. Would you treat medicinal cannabis very differently?
Maybe if I start and hand to you Ben, so no, I think that's, I understand your question, so no. So from our perspective, in a sense, the, the status of whether it's legally prescribed or an illegal substance, the, the great challenge, which I'm sure which we're all wrestling with, which in this area of public policy is assessing that level of impairment. So if an employer forms a view based on whether it's testing, say in the mining sector or based on more qualitative measures, that there is a risk, an imminent risk to health and safety of staff or contractors or clients, an employer is obligated to, to act and to mitigate that risk. So yeah, to answer to your question, it was, we would treat it exactly the same way as a, as a prescribed medicine.
Yeah, and because it is a prescribed medicine in this, you know, in this scenario.
Indeed.
Is, is there a standard way of measuring impairment?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so then it needs to be done, but we're not sure how it's done?
Well, I suppose in, in sector-specific areas such as mining where Ben has spoken about, there are, there are the tools and measures that are, that are industry accepted there. But no, you're right, there's no, from WorkSafe's perspective, because there's no express requirement, mandate or prohibition on this topic. No, we, we don't have a specific view on, on the specifics of how one should test.
So how do you assess for impairment retrospectively then if there has been an accident?
So I suppose it would be less about assessing retrospectively. What we do is when, in the event of any incident, we investigate in accordance with our powers under the O H N S Act. So I'm not sure it's about retrospective testing, but we go in under the powers of our act. We have powers to interview people, request information and then determine a judgement as to whether there's been a breach of the, of the relevant legislation, which is normally the O H N S Act.
Okay. And I think it was Ben, I think you mentioned about some drugs being undeclared. You said the problem is if the drug is undeclared. So what are the rules around declaring what medication you're taking?
So under the legislative obligations to, to set up these structures that are business, the mining industry does have individual policies for, for how to conduct this. Typically, it begins with the onboarding of new staff in pre, pre-employment medical checks and, and at that stage, and then further by way of policy, all staff are encouraged to, to escalate or, or make their employer aware of their, any change to their, their treatments or introduction to, of treatments that may impact their ability to conduct their work.
Okay. I think I heard a buzz off, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heath. I'm just quickly listening to, you mentioned it's mandatory for various sectors to have drug testing, like the mining sectors. Would it, because you also, he said, under your guidelines, his employers develop workplace alcohol and other drug policy should aim to prevention, education, counselling, and we have the employee, would be beneficial for the wider sector to have some sort of mandatory, I mean, having testing availability for the employee, but of course it's voluntary, but it's close and voluntary to participate? Would it be beneficial, like under your guideline, in prevention, education, to have a mandatory with workplace testing across the board?
I suppose, I suppose policymakers would have to, would have to weigh the pros and cons in terms of anything, anything that's mandatory in a workplace. Remember, that's covering such a broad scope, policymakers have to, would have to weigh where you believe the specific risks are. So from a WorkSafe perspective, we don't have a particular view on that, but it's something policymakers would have to wrestle with.
Okay.
Right. In Dr. Heath's questions, you talked about sort of injury and compensation claims.
Yes.
Do you record the extent to which alcohol and other drug use is a contributing factor to injury and compensation claims? Or have you got any research that goes to that question?
I might note at the first part of the question.
That's not part of your standard data collection?
Yeah, no. In terms of, if it's okay with the committee, I can take on notice the question about what research.
I think it'd be useful for, for us to know whether you've got any research that goes to the question of the extent to which alcohol and other drug use is contributing a lot to injury and compensation claims in the workforce.
Yes, if, if that could be captured on, on notice, we'd be looking into that.
Yeah. We've got five minutes left. Joe, did you have to leave? We've got five minutes left. Do you want?
No, no, of course, that's.
David?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm having one of those sort of like parallel universe moments, because Mr. Calafiore, the last time we met was obviously in the context of the WorkCover inquiry where we, we heard about what a diabolical situation WorkCover was in. And I, and I guess I'm looking, and I'm also looking at the submissions that, that are basically suggesting that workplace-based injuries arising from drug and alcohol is a huge issue. And you're saying there is no data held and it seems to be like it's, it's, so for you it's a very low priority. I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile those two perspectives and if you could help us out, that'd be terrific.
Yeah, so, so certainly, I don't think I've ever used the phrase low priority. All workplace incidents from our perspective are preventable. The fact that 35,000 people are getting injured a year in Victoria and 100,000 people are injured is unacceptable. So certainly, I suppose for clarity of the committee, no notes, no workplace injury policy is a low priority. For clarity, I suppose I was responding to an earlier question about whether we see significant amounts of data in our injury data, specifically related to this, to this point. But no, that wasn't intended to imply that we see any issue as a low priority. I was referring to the fact that when we just look at our, and it's published data about the workplace injuries tend to be the traditional types of things that people would be well-known in terms of back injuries, psychosocial injuries, et cetera, et cetera. That's the context of the remarks I was making.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, I think. I'm looking at the, the, the Guide for Developing a Workplace Alcohol and Other Drugs Policy and it talks about central to that process of agreement between employers, unions and health and safety reps, the identification of an employee not fit for work as a result of alcohol and other drug use. I know this is a theme that others have raised, but I'd just like to try and clarify here. In the context of medicinal cannabis, if you're saying to people, negotiate your own agreements, focus on identification of employees not fit for work arising from alcohol and other drugs, how do you do that with medicinal cannabis using a swipe test when clearly it isn't a measure of impairment?
As I said, I can only really speak to our, to our remit. I can't really sort of expand on anything more specifically than that. So what, what we're trying to do in our guidance material is we're trying to provide support material to employers and employees as to how we would approach this topic. The reason we kept saying it depends is because the risks depend very much on your setting and the industry that we are, that we are speaking about. So that's, that's really the basis behind the approach that we take.
So if it's not your remit, whose remit is it? Or is it just a hole in the ground at the moment?
I'm not sure. I mean, our remit's from, we can only speak from our perspective, which is about occupational health and safety obligations on employers and employees and then obligations that occur, arise under the Work Act. So I appreciate it's a challenging area of public policy, but yeah, we're only.
You can't actually point to anywhere else where you can say that's their responsibility? I mean, that's fairly normal.
No, I mean, I can speak to.
Is it a vacuum?
From WorkSafe's perspective, we're clear in terms of what our remit is and we really endeavour to try and be as helpful as possible, whether it be to employers or industry or workers, about ensuring that your workplace is as safe as possible. And if that means we have to try and have a, a fresh look and review our guidance material, we will, we will do that. But I can't really extend beyond our legislative remit.
Thank you, Dave. I think that Dr. Menzio got one more question.
Thank you. Given that workplace drug testing isn't mandatory, but it has been implemented as a, as one tool, I guess, to screen for, I guess, indicates past drug use, is there a risk that it's then, I guess, relied upon by some, you know, industries or organisations as a, as a way to fulfil their obligation to provide a safe workplace? And if we were to remove it, might it increase the, I guess, obligation on, on, you know, managers and others to properly assess for whether their workers were impaired? I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, that screening reduces that sense of, well, we have, we've checked them for drugs, we don't need to, you know, do any other sort of active screening for impairment. If we were to remove mandatory screening in some workplaces, mandatory testing, would managers then have a greater obligation to assess the real-time impairment of, and functional, you know, function of workers?
Interesting question and, and to think about it as a, as a hypothetical there for the mining sector at least. I think enabling the, the best tools to, to make these judgements is, is, is what's intended in the legislation and that is setting up those requirements to, to detect the presence of, of alcohol and drugs and ensure that people don't enter or remain in the workplace if that is detected. That is, I would say, industry standard. It sets a, it sets the culture for the site and the industry and has a clear and well-socialised regime for a site. So I think while it is a, it is a, it could be seen as something that maybe is a point to check your employees, it's not the only point and it doesn't check everything. So I think both the, the supervision and the, the detection is part of a full system here and should both be relied upon.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Menzio. Thank you very much, Chair, for coming in, for giving your insight and your evidence that's available. We'd like to appreciate your time and could I ask the answer to suspend the recording, please? Thank you very much.